Are we good?
Sounds like we are.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So I have the meeting called to order and we have eliminated the echo. So I'd like to entertain first a motion. Because we are hybrid. Hang on, I have to find my handy dandy motion. So that we can operate appropriately on Zoom. Usually Counselor Maldonado Velez has this motion that he makes for us. But he's tied up with a work matter right now. So I'm going to make a motion that we take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, open a public hearing, package items or suspend the rules unless there is an objection. Is there a second on that motion? You're both muted. Counselor Rivera, Counselor Jordan. I see Counselor Givner. I'm looking for a second on the motion. To suspend rules since we're hybrid. Can my committee members hear me? I can't hear them.
They can hear you apparently, you can't hear them.
Counselor Rivera, you're muted.
Counselor, they can hear you, you can't hear them. They've been trying to second.
Counselor Rivera is muted on my screen.
Counselor Jordan did try to second.
He did?
Yeah, you can't hear him for some reason.
But I have to take roll call.
She's, um, no, she's reaching out to Scott right now to figure out what the issue is.
Okay, so I understand the motion has been seconded. In the absence of audio, I'm going to ask the folks on Zoom to raise your hands for the roll call vote to approve this motion. I see, and I'm voting yes, I see four hands, so we're, our meeting is open and we're in order. So I will make the motions since I can't hear you. And I'm going to make a motion to take up item one off the table. And. Raise your hand for a second, please. I see a second by Counselor Jordan and Counselor Givner. All in favor, aye. Show me hands and we'll be good to go. So the petition is from Amy Mato, Street Vendor Application 363 Main Street. We've taken it up, this is the fourth time. We have had no response and we have had no indication that the person is interested in pursuing this license at this time. So I want to offer a motion to give leave to withdraw unless Attorney Bissonette raises his hand and says we can't do that. So. All right, I see Attorney Bissonette wanting to respond, so I'm going to assume that may mean there is some issue on this matter. So I'm going to then make a motion to table and we'll figure it out later. Is, is there a second on a motion to table? The applicant is not here. By a show of hands on the Zoom, can I have a second to table this because the applicant is not here? You can't hear me? Oh, nobody can hear anybody now.
All right, uh, looks like you, looks like you, uh, you can hear Zoom now, so.
Okay.
Believe we should be good.
Okay. Committee members, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
That's the question.
Okay, progress.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so let's back up a bit. We did get the meeting properly opened with our motion because we're hybrid. And so on agenda item one, um, I'll entertain a motion to take that up.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Petition of Amy Mato, Street Vendor Application 363 Main Street. We've taken this up June, August, September and today. We've had no response from the applicant and the applicant is not here. So Attorney Bissonette, can we give this leave to withdraw as a license application?
You choose.
We can't, oh, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion in that regard and then the.
Go ahead.
Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, I was gonna add to some of that. If the license is for them to move the truck from where it's at now up, up to the High Street area like they had originally planned, um, I spoke to the people that work in collaboration with Amy, um, and it sounds like that they're not actually pursuing any at this moment to, to move from where they're at. So it's okay for it to go leave to withdraw. And if, I had told them that if they want it to be moved, feel free to let us know and then we'll file the order all over again just to go through the process if anything.
Okay, great. So is that a motion to give it leave to withdraw?
Yes, I'll file, motions for leave to withdraw.
Is there a second? All in favor? So we have to do roll call. Vacant, yes, Rivera?
Yes.
Givner? Givner, you're muted. Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So four, zero, that is given leave to withdraw. I'll entertain a motion to take up item two and open the public hearing.
Second. Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So this is a public, I'm taking that as four ayes. This is a public hearing, special permit application of Blossom Flower LLC at One Cabot Street for a cannabis third-party transporter license. And we have a proud Ward five resident, Maris Aponte, here with us tonight. Who, if you could just give us a rundown, uh, because we know you've already come down and gone through a lot of special permits with us, um, that would be great. Yes, um, is that button pulled forward?
Can you hear me?
That's better.
Hi, my name is Damaris Aponte, um, Holyoke resident. I live at 16 Mayor Drive. Like I said, Holyoke, Ward five, like Linda said. I'm opening a business in, um, Ward one, which is very exciting. I'm here to get my third-party transport. I've already, already been here before and I got my delivery special permit and also my manufacturing. And right now I just came back to get my third-party transport, which means that I would just be able to go pick up my own cannabis products and bring them back to my facility. And that's what I'm here for today.
And you already have gone to the Cannabis Commission?
Yes, I already went to the Cannabis Control Commission. I already have a provisional license for third-party transport. I got that this year. And I think it was like the same month or the month after I got the special permit. So that's why I came back to follow the rules and get my third special permit today.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are there questions from committee members for Damaris? I'm not seeing any hands. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion on the special permit.
Do we have to close the public hearing first?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Oh, and hang on, hang on. Hang on, yes. Um, just to be precise, because we're a little discobobulated tonight, um, I need to check with the public either on Zoom or in the chambers if anyone wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this special permit.
I promise I told no one to call today. You see, I'm by myself. I wasn't even gonna do the same thing I did last time. It's just me.
I'm not hearing any, seeing anybody in chambers. I'm not seeing any hands or names on Zoom. So it would be timely and thank you Counselor Jordan to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Yep. Still moved.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor, this, I think we'd better do by a roll call. Vacant, yes, Rivera?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Givner?
Givner has to step off.
Oh, okay, three's okay. Three, zero to close the public hearing. And now I'd like to entertain a motion on the special permit for transport.
I'd like to make the motion to approve it.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor, roll call. Vacant, yes, Rivera?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Givner, if you're back? If not, it's a three, zero recommendation to the city council. They will hear it from us at the next meeting.
Thank you so much, you guys, have a good evening.
Okay, you too. Get back to trunk or treat.
Good luck.
Have a good night. So, the planning board is not with us yet. So.
Shall we move to the next item then?
We have in chambers our petitioner on number nine. The zone change application.
Aren't we waiting for something from planning on them? Did we get whatever we needed from them?
I believe, hang on, I'm going through my pile here. I have a recommendation from the planning board dated October 13, received October 17, in front of me and it's in our packets on the desk. If it is the will of the committee to take this up, we would need a motion to go out of order and take up item nine.
Motion to take up item nine.
Is there a second? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Now, item nine was a zone change application from DR to BC for Jose Almonte at 549 to 551 South Bridge Street to rebuild convenience store following a recent fire. Public hearing was closed on 8:22. It was tabled 9:12, waiting for the planning board recommendation. The planning board recommendation, I'll read into the record because you don't have it. So, dear Chair Vacant and honorable members of the ordinance committee, on consideration of the materials submitted with this application for a zone change and the testimony from applicants and neighbors received as part, the planning board makes the following recommendation on this application. We find that the business proposed by Mr. Almonte is appropriate to the location, that it will fill a genuine need in the neighborhood. We therefore support the project as proposed. We believe however that the goals of our zoning ordinance would be materially better met by amending the zoning ordinance to allow his project via newly created special permit for the current DR zoning rather than by granting a zone change from DR to BC. We therefore recommend that the instant application be given leave to withdraw and that the city council act promptly to amend the zoning ordinance to create the necessary special permit mechanism and allow Mr. Almonte to file for the newly created special permit. The advantages of doing so are clear. The planning board has every confidence in Mr. Almonte's own plans for this property, but as the council knows, a zone change is permanent and once a parcel is given a new and less restrictive zone, any use available in the new zone as of right can be placed there. The BC zone is one of the least restrictive in Holyoke. It allows for uses that are not appropriate to the dense residential character of the zoning ordinance seeks to create for the DR zone, such as a fast food restaurant or a commercial parking lot. While these uses might seem unlikely for the current parcel, given the applicant's firm plans, in combination with the neighboring empty lots, BC zoning could lead to uses that could irreparably harm this residential neighborhood. Mr. Almonte's proposed bodega is appropriate, indeed, if it were to be housed in a three-story building with residential units, the bodega use would be allowable as of right in DR now. But the fact that a needed and desirable use is planned for the parcel now does not protect it from inappropriate uses in the future. Moreover, a zone change to BC would create a precedent for encroachment of business zoning into the neighborhood. Amending the zoning ordinance to create a special permit allowing appropriate uses in a single-story or two-story building in DR under appropriate enumerated conditions avoids all these risks while allowing Mr. Aponte's project, Almonte, sorry, his project to go forward. It would allow the permit granting authority to ensure the character of the DR districts is maintained and discourage housing loss while still allowing for the flexibility to enable needed businesses to be cited in locations where the requirements of zoning ordinance section 88.2 cannot be met. And it would make that mechanism available in all future similar cases. You understand that Mr. Almonte needs a reasonably fast resolution to this matter. Over the course of our hearings, we discussed this alternative with Mr. Almonte and his counsel. They were initially open to this alternative approach, but in the most recent session of our planning, our public hearing, they informed us, they had consulted members of the city council. And had been advised that to establish a suggested special permit would involve many months of delay. Indeed. They had been told the order beginning the amendment process could not even be filed until January. Well, that's not the case, but. If true, this is a significant enough delay to create a real hardship for the applicant. We do not control the council's schedule, but given the superiority of establishing a special permit mechanism to address this question, we think it is important to ensure that the information the applicant received is accurate. Amending the zoning ordinance to add a special permit mechanism would obviously involve some delay as compared to simply approving a zone change application already before the council, but we see no technical reason why it should be a half-year or greater delay. Section 8.8 of the zoning ordinance, which sets forth the purpose and rules of the DR district, already provides for a number of special permits. See sections 8.83 and 8.85. Another special permit can easily be added as section 886 since the goals of this proposed special permit are clear and simply stated. Drafting language for it presents no difficulty. And in order to facilitate the council's consideration of this alternative, the planning board in consultation with Attorney Jane Mantuleski from the Law Department has prepared draft language for it, which is attached to this recommendation. MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, sets out the procedural requirements for an amendment to the zoning ordinances. And it goes on to explain the process. For all these reasons, we recommend that the application for zone change from DR to BC be given leave to withdraw and that the council move immediately to amend the zoning ordinance to add a special permit under which the permit granting authority could authorize the applicant's proposed single-story business use in the DR zone. We would also hope that should it accept this recommendation, the council waive any fees associated with Mr. Almonte's application for the special permit and undertake to grant that permit as rapidly as responsible review allows. Respectfully, Mimi Panage, Planning Board Chair. So I will correct two things in the, in the communication and one, that to my knowledge, it's never been stated that it would, could not be filed until January. It could have been filed two months ago, um, or that it would take six months. Having said that, I do not believe this body has the authority to give leave to withdraw to an application for zone change unless the applicant wishes to give it leave to withdraw. So does the applicant wish to give this leave to withdraw or does the applicant wish the committee to move forward with the recommendation?
Yeah, Attorney Andrea Bruno McGinnis, the applicant wishes to go forward.
Thank you. Members of the committee, any questions or concerns? We had lengthy discussion. We've heard from people in the neighborhood who to a person were in support of this zone change. In this session, we have done on one other occasion, a zone change of a similar nature relative to a cannabis business that was a spot zone. So that's just a thumbnail summary so that we don't do, go through the whole public hearing.
Can I say anything?
Notes. Again, I just want to see if the committee has any questions for you? If there are no questions from members of the committee, the applicant would like to give us some, an update. I'm not seeing any hands, so, um, attorney.
When we first went to the planning board, they told us that they were concerned about spot zoning, but then we never heard spot zoning mentioned again. They came up with this idea on their own and they asked us to consider doing it this other way. And I said, well, do we have to do it that other way? Because your concern was spot zoning, but we said we didn't think it was spot zoning because spot zoning, if you can show a need in the community, then it wouldn't be considered spot zoning. And we felt that all the people that came and testified showed that there was a need for this type of a business in the community. So they came up with this kind of idea on their own and they sent us out and said, think about it and come back. So we actually went to the planning board, three meetings. And then they kind of said, well, this is what we want you to do. And we said, well, we don't understand why we need to do this if we don't have a problem with the way we're going.
Okay.
So we want to continue the way we were going because it means starting all over again and then going through the amendment process, which I understand would need to go to the city council, have a public hearing. And this affects many parts of the city. I mean, not just this property. It's Springdale, it's downtown, it's, um, above Brown Am, and it's, it's, many places have this designation. So I don't know what, if anybody else is gonna come forward on it, but, um, it, it, it's bigger than, than his property. And then it has to go back to committees and then it has to come back to the city council and then he has to go through the special permit on top of it all. So we've already gone to five meetings. We have one more at least to go. And if we start over, then we have to go through it all again. We've been doing this since the summer. We're now into November. We're concerned that if we add more time, he'd like to break ground in the spring and we really wouldn't like to see that delayed if, if possible.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. So if I'm hearing this clearly, because I'm trying to understand. They've devised, the, the planning board has come up with a way to do it where we can actually make it. So that there's a special permit process moving forward when other situations like this come up. Is that, is that what I'm understanding in summation of what it sounded like was written?
Well, they are asking us to do it for this application, but you are correct. At any time, we could amend our ordinances to add a special permit going forward for other people who might find themselves in a similar situation. But in this particular moment, the only thing we have before us is to change the zone from DR to BC. So that is the only recommend.
Yeah. I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand what the planning board put forth, because in my mind, I ain't gonna lie, it kind of makes sense to develop a process moving forward to always have this and not have to deal with this, because it's not gonna be, like she mentioned, it's not gonna just be this moment. So it, it should be something that has developed in a process that sets a precedent moving forward. I understand that the application already has had a process of its own. But the planning department is recommending something, I, I kind of want to lean towards what the planning department is recommending, but at the same time, I also hear, um, the, Mr. Almonte's pleas, because he has been going through the process for some while and it has been arduous. There have been a variety of different times of miscommunication and that's something that we've been trying to clean up and we apologize, um, through our city departments. But, um, I just, I, I just, I'm just trying to hear it all out so that way when we go to make a decision, I can have a more, more informed decision, more or less.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that they told us that they tailored their amendment to his situation. And when I try to apply that to other places in the city, it kind of becomes hard because you'd have to have a vacant lot.
So. So going forward, we could consider amending our ordinances around this recommendation. But right now, we need to make a recommendation relative to the zone change. Are there any other?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, so I hear.
I'd like to, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to approve his request and, uh, when we get to the discussion, I'll explain why.
Okay. Do I have a second from a committee member?
A second, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to approve the zone request under discussion. Counselor Jordan?
Yes, I feel that, you know, one, looking at Mr. Almonte's situation, I think he's following the process that we had in place at the start of this. Maybe what the planning board has got their finger on would be a good future process for other situations down the road and maybe we need to follow a process to think about, you know, where we go from here in terms of future applicants, but based on the rules in place at the time he started, you know, he has this avenue available to him. And I don't think it's really fair to him to say, well, you know, thank you for your application, but we've decided that we want to create this new process because we don't feel this process is, you know, ideal. Well, you know, that's not really fair to him. And I think we should weigh it based on the rules in place coupled with, you know, the merits of everything that we've heard over the many months. And that is that there was no neighborhood opposition. In fact, there was nothing but neighborhood support of it. It's supporting a business going down in the, um, in South Holyoke. This guy was the victim of a terrible fire and he's trying to salvage his business by getting this back into place. And time is of the essence on a lot of that. And to just, you know, get into all of this and a lot of what ifs and it could be a winding path, so who knows where that would open up once we create this quote unquote new process? And maybe we'll uncover new things in the new process. So I, I feel what is fair and what is the best result is that for this person to be allowed to rebuild, to, to do what we're doing. When you look at his lot, the configuration, I don't see any bad ever coming out of this. And if he gets what he wants, he's going to get a one-story store on this location. It isn't going to be usable, the lot, for any other purpose. And it should be noted that there, right across the street is exactly in the same DR zone is a store front, a one-story storefront, just like he's gonna have. So it isn't like this is, um, wild to the neighborhood by any means. And I think that's why, you know, we don't have enough businesses in South Holyoke and, um, this is important for the neighborhood. And, um, you know, for people that are gonna invest in the community, um, I think they deserve to have, um, you know, all of that considered and, and that's why I'm in favor of approving this.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. So I don't disagree. I think, um, Mr. Almonte and the business that has been there for years has put in a lot of time and effort and, and, uh, there's a, there's a, for me, there's a. It's, there's a grandfathering effect for me, um, especially knowing the, the services and having experienced it with the other bodega that, um, his family owns in, in the flats, um, in my neighborhood. So there's a, there's a, there's a sentiment of agreeing with the fact that there was already a bodega there, um, and the community already understands that and felt that. And I, I would say that I would have to agree to this. For now, we vote this through. I, I would be in favor of it too. But I also have to hear what the planning board, um, is putting forth, because I, I want to follow up on that and make sure that they're actually gonna continue to, 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 to help us walk through this process that they're trying to develop, because it does make sense, uh, with the process that they're coming forth. And it, it is, it is kind of unfair to penalize Mr. Almonte. To, as we develop the process.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. So I'm not seeing any other hands and so we have a motion to approve the zone change. All in favor? I would say vacant, yes. Jordan?
Yes.
Rivera? Israel?
Yes.
Yes, so that is three, zero. Counselor Givner has not rejoined us yet. So this as a majority recommendation of the committee will go forth to the city council at our next meeting. Thank you. Okay, I'm still not seeing planning board members.
Madam Chair, they said they're finishing up one more item.
Okay. So. Do members see an item on the agenda they think we could take up and deal with fairly efficiently? We do have legal form for item eight for the Food Coalition that has been back and forth on the agenda for a long time.
I'm prepared to, yeah, I'll suspend the rules to go to item eight if you wish.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So item eight was filed by Counselors Rivera, Is, Israel Rivera, Counsel Anderson Burgos, and Counsel Maldonado Velez, ordered to establish a Holyoke Food Coalition by city ordinance. This kind of bounced back and forth as to whether we did need an ordinance or did not need an ordinance. And at the end of the day, I guess it was recommended that it would be wise to have it in ordinance form. And you folks have it in your packet that you received by email from Jeffrey? I don't know if you're looking at it online. But if you recall, we had established language for the scope and purpose, which was to identify and propose innovative policies and programmings and/or project solutions to improve the Holyoke food system. Then it went on that the coalition would utilize the plans of EPA, Holyoke Local Food, Urban Forest Equity Plan, Urban Renewal Plan, and a variety of other food-oriented plans. Then it went on to, and we spent a fair amount of time discussing what the composition of the coalition would be. And in the end, we ended up with a coalition. She'll have a minimum of seven members, but no more than 15. Each member shall be appointed by the mayor for a term of three years. The coalition shall be composed of one representative from the following entities: Board of Health, Planning and Economic Development, Local Business Association, Food Justice Organization, Public Health Organization, Holyoke Public Schools Food Service Director, Local Food Pantry, Agricultural Producers, Processors, and Manufacturers, Local Agricultural Producers, Restaurant, Supermarket/Grocery Store, Nutritionist/Food Healthcare Advocate. That's one category K. So I didn't read every single word, but the scope gives a little bit more language that talks about prioritizing all goals and recommendations and developing a strategy and deadlines in furtherance of the Holyoke food system and entrepreneurship in conjunction with any and all municipal department necessary for implementation of such goals and recommendations. So it would be an added Division Eight Food Economy Coalition. That's a fairly complete reading of it if you don't have it immediately in front of you. If someone is comfortable to make a motion, we could recommend this to the council.
Counsel Rivera, you were a co-sponsor of this. Did it come out the way you wanted it?
I'm actually looking for it right now. I haven't had the time to look at it, to be honest with you. But it's, according to the summation of Counselor Vacan put forth, it sounds all right to me. But if it's up to you guys, we can table it where Counselor Maldonado, who has, who's more involved with this, can speak more on it. Or I can push it forward and at the full council, they can speak more on it, I guess. It's up to you guys, too.
Yeah, maybe we go forward to the council. And if worse comes to worse, it turned out not okay, maybe we table it at the council level?
That's what I figure.
Okay.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that'll be adopted then.
Second.
All in favor? Vacan, aye. Izzy Rivera?
Aye.
Counsel Jourdain?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I should have said Counsel Izzy Rivera? Adopt 3-0 to recommend to the city council at the next meeting. And maybe we can just make sure all the members get a chance to look at it. So if there's any questions prior to, maybe we could get them straightened out. Okay? Thank you. So I see one member of our planning board here. So I guess we will go to our joint hearings once the rest of the folks come on Zoom. I see Sharon, too.
Yep, they are all on. I think I'm waiting for Mimmy Panich.
So, hang on with me. Okay, so you're all set, planning board?
I'm just waiting for the chair to arrive.
Sorry about that.
I think she's coming. Oh, there's Nathan. I just need one more. I'm sure we can, if you need to proceed, we can have the vice chair open up the meeting if she's not here.
I don't mind waiting a minute if-
Okay. She should be coming.
Do you think maybe she's having some technical difficulties?
Yep, there she is.
Okay. Okay, so our planning board is with us. And so what I would like to do is entertain a motion to open the joint public hearing with our planning board for item three.
Motion to open joint public hearing with the planning board for item three.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is ordered that the city council add a section for battery storage facilities to the zoning ordinance section to be determined to reflect technology advancements and future needs for such installations. New facilities will be reviewed through Section 10, Major Site Plan Review. We have joint hearings in December, January, April, May, August, and today.
So I would entertain a motion to reopen our public hearing for the Battery Energy Storage System ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
By roll call vote, Nathan?
Yes.
Bernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimmy?
Okay. So at our last joint public hearing, we had asked the law department to provide us with an executive summary so we could move forward with legal form for the ordinance. And I don't know if planning board has it. I was just handed it in the meeting tonight. Do planning board members have this document that starts with Section 2 definitions?
I believe we do.
And then further, it's dated October 23rd regarding large-scale battery energy storage system?
Yes.
With potential revisions? Okay. Okay. So I would like to check in with my committee and the planning board. We have received a lot of information in the many public hearings that we've had. And I think we're well on our way to having some good ordinance language. But it seems like we have reached a point, although I did see Mr. Zwirko on the Zoom. If he wants to weigh in, I certainly want to hear from him. If he wants to go over any of this document with us and make sure we have anything in it that they feel we should consider. I did see him on earlier.
HG&E has not seen the latest version of that draft or the summary.
Okay. All right then. So what I would like my committee to consider, and certainly the planning board can make their determination, I believe we have obtained all the information that we need in terms of the public hearing to be able to move forward to create the ordinance. And we're a good ways through having that. And the other logistical matters that we need to complete can be done outside of a public hearing. And so this will not, of course, limit the ability of the HG&E folks to look at this draft language and give feedback to the planning board and the committee if we close the public hearing. But unless there are folks who think that we will have new information relative to this that we need to hear, I think we would be in a proper form to close the public hearing at this point. Do my committee members have any comments or thoughts in that regard? Not seeing any, so we'll see what planning board thinks.
My only concern about this would be that if Mr. Zwirko has any conceivable thoughts about whether there might be more information that HG&E would want to contribute after reviewing this ordinance. I don't think we've made any changes to it that HG&E has not already reviewed. And when we last talked, it sounded as though we were all on the same page. And if he is satisfied, then it may make sense for us. But I always am concerned that some bit of information will come in that requires us to reopen and look at it if any amendments need to be made. And I, too, would very much like to close this if it seems appropriate and get a move on adopting it. So do any of my board members have any comments about this? Kate?
Just as a matter of procedure, the ordinance committee should know that we just talked with Attorney Matt Tulesky and answered most of the outstanding questions that were in her letter. So I think that there's, if it's not in your inbox already, there's a, there'll be a version that just cleans up the few things that were outstanding.
Okay. Well, if my committee feels comfortable, I feel comfortable to close the public hearing, we can still make language changes if they're needed to the ordinance language following the closing of the public hearing. We're not prohibited in that regard. So what is the will of my, of the ordinance committee?
Lynda John Zwirko has his hand up.
Oh, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that if there's been no material changes, we were definitely okay with the latest, the, the last draft. So if there has been no revisions or changes to it, there's been no advances in the, the language on, on our end. So we're, we're comfortable with proceeding with it.
Right.
I'm seeing Jane's hand up.
Jane?
Thank you. So I just wanted to, you know, confirm that I did have a couple of questions for the planning board that we discussed today at the meeting, which is why I'm sorry that our, the executive summary was a little bit later. The, mainly, you know, the revisions included adding just some more notice to various city departments and making sure that it was clear as to when a special permit was going to be obtained versus, or necessary versus a site plan approval. So I think, you know, as to anything as it relates to, you know, review or requirements, those have essentially stayed the same.
So can I just verify, because I haven't had a chance to look at it, that there is some language in there that says that the accessory that is small won't exceed the power going to the residents? That was one of the defining limits that HG&E shared with us for the small scale.
Right. Yeah, it's my understanding that the small scale is used to supply backup electrical power to a residence or a business on the same parcel or that is accessory to a residential, commercial, or industrial use. And large scale is intended to be used to supply backup electrical power for a business on the same parcel or to store and supply electrical energy to the electric grid.
Okay. So I just have one quick question for John. So John, does that definition by the words that describe the use embrace or include the idea that the size of that unit would not exceed the service to the home? Or do we need to say that in plain words?
I, I believe it does say it in the definition. If somebody could read the definition of the small scale, it says it's not to exceed the service size of the building, I believe is what we left it.
Okay, perfect. Bear with me, because I know that you had gone over this a couple of times with this. I just literally didn't have time to look at it. So I appreciate that. All right. So for my part, hearing everything that I've heard, I'd be interested in entertaining a motion to close our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Vacan, yes. Jourdain?
Yes.
Rivera? Thank you. That, the public hearing is closed on a 3-0.
Givner is back.
Oh. Counsel Givner, thank you. 4-0.
Excuse me, we do have one participant on Zoom. Do we need to allow for public comments before closing, or?
Yes. Good point. Thank you. So let us just be sure if there's anybody in the public. There's nobody in chambers, but if there's somebody on Zoom who wishes to comment relative to this new ordinance, to be sure they're heard before. Not seeing any. So I'm a little out of order, but... So if we want to be precise and correct, could I entertain a motion again to close the public hearing now that we've asked for public comment and there was none, committee? Sorry about that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Vacan, yes. Jourdain?
Yes.
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So our public hearing is closed.
Okay. And hearing no objection from our attorney, I, too, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'm relying on the fact that nobody wanted to comment to the city council about this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
By roll call vote, Nathan?
Yes.
Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Memmy?
Yes.
Okay. Item four. I'd like to entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Motion to reopen the public hearing? Right or?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Sorry.
So which is your item four? Because we have everything listed in different court.
Oh, okay. Our item four, I'll read it in. Order that the zoning ordinance, Section 6.4.2 exemptions be amended to add a letter K. Banners or signs associated with a civic or municipal program may be allowed in all districts. Community or commercial sponsorship may be displayed on said banner or sign, provided that the banner sign itself is not greater than six square feet. These installations must be approved by the city and by the Department of Public Works as applicable. The joint hearing was continued from April, May, and August.
Thank you very much. And I too entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing for zoning text change to amend Section 6.4.2 to add a letter K banners or signs from 2023 to...
So just... Don't move. Oh, okay.
Second.
All in favor? By roll call vote, Rosanna? Gernander?
I have a question, sorry. About the...
You have a question before we make open?
To open it? Okay.
My question was, when it says the installation must be approved by the city, by the city who? Anybody in the city? Or is it a specific department?
Hold that thought. We need to open the public hearing before we can start discussing the details.
I have a motion on the floor by Kate, a second by Gernander. All those in favor, by roll call vote. Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Gernander? Gernander? Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Memmy?
Yes.
All right, four to zero on that one.
Okay, now we can talk about substance.
Yes. So just by way of summary, my notes and recollection are that we had some discussion about some concerns about who in the city it would be, because if it wasn't clear, it could lead to a lot of confusion. And there were also some concerns about commercial sponsorship and whether it would amount to advertising for a business through city-funded banners. And so we had tabled it looking, I think, for some feedback relative to those questions. From legal, is my recollection. I don't know if Planning Board has a different take on it.
No, I think that is, I think, my recollection too. If anyone on the Planning Board has any recollection of further updates. But I think we were waiting on a, you know, what would amount to a legal draft.
Right.
Yeah, my understanding was we had clarified who was the decision-making authority. And yeah, we were just waiting for a legal draft back.
So we weren't clear on who was doing the legal draft? So I don't know, Attorney Mantuleski or Attorney Bissonnet? Or should we table this?
Hi, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I know Attorney Deggan forwarded something, a draft over today, I believe, to...
Today? Oh. Let me double check to be sure it's not in our packet here.
Yeah, I see that on the Google Drive.
Madam Chair, yeah, it was sent late. It was sent this afternoon.
I'm just not seeing it on the table here, but maybe I merged it with something.
I can screen share if that helps.
That would help, thank you.
Thank you.
I assume you're all seeing it?
Yep.
Is Section 2 the last end of it, right? Okay. Okay. So... So that is the original language that we received before we had our discussion. And so I think what we're looking for is the clarification relative to the approval and also the clarification of who the commercial sponsorships would be. So the way this language is written, it isn't clear who in the city would be authorizing them. And it says all districts or where they would be going. So it's very broad and vague, and I think we were asking for a little more specificity, is my recollection.
I thought we had gotten much farther along in the wording than this. I'll go and look through, but I felt like we had resolved all these questions and somehow make it in here.
Mm-hmm. So I don't think... Okay, well, let me ask this as a question. I think we have the information, but I guess we're still a little vague about how broad this will be. So I guess we have to keep the public hearing open until we get clarity on that.
It sounds like we have to go back and see whether we have anything in writing that resolves any of this.
Right, I had notes that talked about the commercial aspect. I have a note that talked about a limit. And I have a note that we would be getting some feedback tonight, but I don't have detail, a lot of detailed notes.
So you all are obviously the people who are empowered to ask for this as legal form. So just as a question, if we can uncover anything that bears on this and you have notes that bear on this, does it make sense to forward them all to Attorney Deggan and just ask for an update?
Sure, sure. I'm just not sure about keeping the public hearing open. I mean, do we... I don't know who the commercial people are or who the controlling authority in the city will be. And I guess that was the whole purpose of having the public hearing, right?
Well, that and, you know, once we close a public hearing...
Right.
You know, we have time limits on how quickly we need to act. And as long as the public hearing is open, you know, we don't have the potential to have to renotice the whole thing because time has expired while we're waiting.
Exactly. So I guess I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. And in the meantime, any notes anybody on planning and ordinance committee has can be forwarded over to Attorney Deggan to be incorporated into an updated legal form for the next meeting. Does that sound reasonable?
Well, I see two hands. One of them is from Jane and one of them is from Kate, so...
Okay.
I don't know who was...
Jane, go first.
Thank you. So I just did a quick look at my notes from this, from our 820, or the City Council's 822 meeting. And it looks like that there was question as to that it should be limited as to only as approved by the city and then maybe OPED and only for adopt-a-lot or on poles. So I think there was still a question as to what we were going to put it into legal form. So I think there was still a question as to whether or not OPED was going to be the one that was going to be approving it. And then as to the use, the adopt-a-lot or on poles, I think was up still for further discussion.
So that's, my little scribbles verify what you've just said. And I think what we were hoping to get was a legal draft that we could then look at and then perhaps further amend if we had come up with other thoughts in between that meeting and this meeting. So if we could get that draft, unless people in the moment have some other questions that they'd like to get more clarification on.
So just a, just a response or a question for the question. So would the City Council and Planning Board like the legal form to have OPED be the decision-maker and then specify that it shall only be on adopt-a-lots or utility pools? Or should we just leave it blank there? Just I want to make sure that we all know for the form.
So I'll ask another question to a question. Thank you. So my question would be, in the other instances where the city is approving it, is it usually OPED or is it usually somebody else? I mean, it seems to make it clear if it's consistently in one place to keep it there. Because we have a bunch of exemptions.
I think that this came out of a thought process with OPED. So I think that makes complete sense to have them be the ones that are handling it. So I think that's the answer to that question.
Okay, so from my perspective, and I'll let the committee weigh in, I think it's fine to come back with a draft that says that and the other points that you made. And if other thinking comes up at the next hearing, well, we'll address it then. Ordinance committee members, any other? I'm not seeing any hands, but I'm not seeing everybody.
Um, Kate has her hand up.
Thank you.
So Kate?
Yeah, my understa, I don't, I don't have my notes in front of me on this, but what I'm recalling was that the... I suppose it could be OPED as one of the decision-makers because they're the ones bringing this forward as a project of theirs. But I thought in that regard, the idea was to leave it as like the relevant city department with the idea that at some point in the future, some other departments within the city might sponsor some kind of temporary signage program like this. But that, that the relevant city department would be one place that would have to be checked. And if memory serves, you know, it would need to... I think it was DPW because they need to know whether it's gonna, they need to make sure it's not impinging on a roadway.
Oh, okay.
And building department to make sure it follows general sign regulations otherwise. I'm trying to reconstruct our discussion. I felt like we had this all ironed out and I just don't have the notes in front of me.
So I'm ass, I think I'm hearing what Kate is saying, and I think if you can incorporate all of those things into the draft, we'll be where we thought we were last time.
You know, one possibility, if notes fail, is we can go back to the recording of the previous meeting where this was discussed.
Well, I would leave that to the attorneys. So I'd like to entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing. Attorney Mantuleski, I know you, I don't think you were the one directly working on this, but should we continue for a month? Or do you think we need to go out further? We're getting close to the end of the year.
No, I would just continue to your next public hearing. I think it can be an easy revision.
So November 28th?
I think that's more than sufficient, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, can I hear a motion?
Don't move. Don't move without the...
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to continue this public hearing to November 28th. That's 6:30. All in favor? Vacant, yes? Jordane?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Okay, this public hearing is continued to November 28th. Thank you.
Okay, um, I too would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to November 28th.
Uh, Chair Panis, before you make, or somebody makes the motion. Yeah, I think maybe, I forgot to mention this earlier. I apologize. Maybe one thing that the legal team can clarify is should there be some kind of percentage limitation on the area taken up by the commercial message? I think that was one of the kind of questions that was hanging in the earlier hearing. If you're going to have a commercial message, it's probably, it needs to be probably restricted in some way.
Well, this was why I suggested that perhaps if it comes down to it, we check the recording of the last public hearing to make sure that we've caught everything that was supposed to wind up as.
Okay.
And that we hash it all tonight.
Yeah, when we, we'll take another look at it and make sure we include everything that was discussed.
Thank you. I make the motion to continue to November 28th?
Is there a...
Second.
Second? Thank you.
Second.
By roll call vote, Gernander? Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Memmy?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Four to zero, four.
Okay. Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing for item five.
Motion to reopen the public hearing for item five.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The public hearing ordered that the zoning ordinance be amended to add a section for short-term rentals in addition to amending Section 2 definitions and any other sections that may apply to this use. And we had hearings on this in April, May, and August.
Motion to reopen the public hearing on short-term rentals.
Don't move.
Second.
Uh, by roll call vote, Gernander?
Yes, sorry, stand before. Something wrong with the, I couldn't unmute myself. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, welcome back. Uh, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Memmy?
Yes.
So we do have Daven Passick with us, and he did forward us some language. And he also had sent us a communication letting us know that the state building code, I believe, is in the process of being amended. So if folks are willing, I would sort of like to let Daven run through this for us.
Sounds accepted.
Okay. Daven, you have the floor.
Yeah. Okay, hi.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, sorry, I'm just giving my kids a bath. So, yes, the, hold on, baby. Go see mommy, go see mommy. The, the new building code, the international building code, is being adopted by Massachusetts. So the Massachusetts 780 CMR. And it includes quite a bit about short-term rentals. And it includes quite a bit about short term rentals. There is a draft circulating, but they are still in process. There's still a couple more rounds of public hearings. They are trying, they are aiming, they have told everybody that they're aiming for July January 1, 2024 adoption. So I believe we should hold off on making any significant ordinance changes until that comes out.
Okay. So this is a rather interesting circumstance. So we'll be coming to the end of a term. I think on the city council side, the only logistical challenge we have is picking a date certain when there will be a new council and new committees and new schedules. I'm not sure how that works from the planning board's side. I don't I haven't come across this particular issue. I suppose we could continue to the last Tuesday in January. And then if all things were problematic, a quorum could meet to change the date and continue the public hearing. But at least then it would have a placeholder and it wouldn't have to start over. How does that sound to planning?
I think it works for us because we don't have the same kinds of limitations when the curve flips. We just continue on as though nothing happened.
So does
That it would be January 23.
January 23? What do ordinance committee members think? Do you think we can encumber the new committee for January 23 and then they could change it if they needed to depending on their logistics?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Gavin, was there any of this information you wanted to go over with us at all? Or you think it's all premature and just wait because we will have forgotten it by then anyway? Or if we're even on the committee?
Right, yeah, I believe it'd be that premature. I mean, they I think I believe they have a good sense of where they want to go with it, but really nothing set in stone and it could all change by by January 1. So yeah, I don't think there's anything really worth discussing.
Okay, so I have a motion to continue the public hearing to January 23 at 6:30.
Madam Chair?
Yes? Counsel Givner?
I just thanks, Madam Chair. I just wonder if it if it makes sense to give this a leave to withdraw so that any new council could file another order?
Well
Especially with the laws changing.
Well, the only thing is if we do that, then the whole advertising process will have to start over. And if we just continue it and they don't like the date we picked, they can collaborate with planning and figure out a way to change the date more easily than having to do everything all over.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So
Hands up by Kate. Kate?
Yeah.
Thanks, I just I have a question for Gavin, actually wondering whether there's anything, Gavin, that you can see that's under discussion at the state level that might be areas that will still be up to munis- that will still clearly be up to municipalities to decide? Because those are areas that we could start thinking about now on background. I'm not saying that we need any further hearings, but between now and January, are there things that we should be considering because they're still clearly going to be our purview?
I believe there there will be, and I don't have that draft in baby, I'm sorry, go see mommy, go see mommy. Okay, go go to mommy, I'm on the phone, baby. So sorry, so sorry. So yes, there are some things, I don't have the draft laws in front of me. But there are there's language about different types of short term rentals as far as even having buildings that are devoted just for for short term rentals. So there are some things that we can discuss. I don't believe it needs to be in a public setting, but we I think we should definitely talk about it.
All right, can you just be sure to forward those to both planning and ordinance as soon as you get?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So to ordinance committee, we have a motion to continue the public hearing to January 23 at 6:30. So all in favor? Vacant? Yes? Jordane?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, just in case, there's a person named Betsy on Zoom. If that person wants to make a public comment about this hearing item. I guess not.
Is it the planning board's rule to continue this public hearing to that same date in January? If so, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
This is a second.
Second.
By roll call vote, Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Not Nathan?
Yes.
Kate? Kate? Maybe frozen? And Memmy?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that concludes us.
Yes, thank you all very much.
You too.
But do we do we need to close the public hearing for the planning board? I think Memmy just left.
I I think you did.
Oh, we did?
I think so.
Oh, okay. Right, I guess all the staff is gone too. Okay, though, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a nice, happy Halloween. I guess that's the next thing coming up. Okay, we're back to ordinance committee, so I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item seven.
That's six. Isn't that wouldn't that be the next item? Why we do that?
Oh, hang on. You're right, I had written my note. Okay. You're correct.
Okay, take up item six off the table?
All in favor? Aye. Item six, ordered that the city of Halyoke develop a personnel policy for the handling of administrative leave and codifying the rules into ordinance as recommended by the personnel department, including but not limited to when employees should or should not be placed on paid leave or unpaid leave. The current process appears lacking objective standards. Taxpayers should also be protected to ensure people who should not be out on paid administrative leave are placed on unpaid administrative leave. Counsel Jordane is the filer of the order. Do you wish to speak? I know we did get some feedback from legal.
Yes, Attorney Mantaleski was very helpful. She I was able to read her legal opinion. I think that's great because I think it's exactly on point. As we had spoke in the last time we had talked, we had a discussion between Personnel and Us. Personnel had done a synopsis of a lot of the collective bargaining agreements and what they had to say on the topic of, you know, who goes out on unpaid, who goes out on a paid? And there was some concern about, you know, what should be the guiding principles here? At the last meeting, I pointed out this particular state statute, the 268A, I believe it's section 25, which is in the ethics law. And appreciate Attorney Mantaleski kind of looking into like, how does all this jive together? And there was some case law on it in this city of Boston versus the International Association of Firefighters case. Looks like it's a 1996 case that kind of, you know, really addresses this exact point, which is essentially, if I'm Attorney Mantaleski, by all means, please weigh in here, but essentially is unless the statute specifically enumerates it under 150E, section 7D, then there's a question as to if there is a material conflict. If there is, then 268A, section 25 would prevail. If there isn't, then the collective bargaining agreement would prevail. So now the question will be, where does the state statute conflict or not conflict? So I think that now is going to have to be examined. And essentially, to summarize the statute, it gets into the question of when an employee has misconduct on the job. The statute appears to be clear, and legal, please weigh in, but appears to be clear that in that situation, you have to be on an unpaid leave. And that ultimately, if you're found not responsible or not guilty or however that shakes out that's favorable to the person that was placed on unpaid leave, then you would be reinstated with full retirement credit, your back pay, the whole nine. On the other hand, if you're not, then you would not receive those benefits. So that doesn't appear to be what's going on currently here in Halyoke, as best as I understand it, that if people are accused of misconduct in their employment, and I think some of the question is, is it work related? What if you're, you know, on a certain? I think we have to study this more. And I would ask law department to work with Personnel to see what is conflicting, what if there is no conflict and the CBA governs, then let's follow that. I think we need to continue to do more research, but I think this gets us over an important hurdle point because obviously there was one in the news that seems to me to be pretty misconduct on the job, or at least that's the allegations. And, you know, that person was on paid leave. Now, how does that jive with this statute, which seems to speak to unpaid leave? So I mean, I just want to make sure that we have a and the whole reason I filed this in the first place is, do we have a coherent policy on all of this that is examining these questions? It seems very piecemeal right now, like some do this, some do that. If it's this kind of a crime, we do this. If it's this kind of a crime, we do that. I'd like to see this a lot more buttoned up because one of the things that concerns me is I don't I don't want to be paying paid leave to a person because there's basically no way you're going to get the money back if we're not required to give the paid leave. I mean, if we're required, then let's do it. But if it's supposed to be an unpaid leave situation as contemplated under the statute and otherwise, and the person is unsuccessful and loses and is found responsible for their the alleged conduct, then the taxpayers are now not out that money. And I guess it also goes to the question of if you are ultimately found responsible, you know, what happens with these buybacks? Are you accumulating extra time while you're out and then scoring yet another windfall on the way out the door? Are you retiring and collecting XYZ? So I just would like all of this examined a lot more closely and and consider all of these rules so that, you know, ultimately, the taxpayers and are, you know, are getting full freight here for what are the rules? And at the same time, you know, we have a coherent policy for employees that is fair to them and they're not being treated any differently than past employees or future employees. So that that's basically where I would like to take this. I certainly don't think we're going to solve this issue tonight, but I think we've gotten I I think this legal opinion is very helpful and we continue to get where we need to be. I just think we need more more homework and more examination now in light of the legal opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so not seeing any other hands.
I think Counsel Rivera has his hand up.
Oh, does he? Counsel Rivera?
Yeah.
I can't see you for some reason.
I I don't disagree with a thank you, Madam Chair. I don't disagree with a lot of points made by Counsel Jordane. I think the point where I I I have some concern is if someone were to actually win the case, I mean, get found not guilty and then decide to to not just get reimbursed what we owe them, but also sue them for not being able to pay their bills for throughout the time of not being paid throughout the trial process. Usually, the trial process is not a quick process, goes over about a year, year and a half, sometimes two to three years for some. So we're talking about two to three years of someone not getting paid and then us having to reimburse them all in one shot if they get found not guilty, right? And then there's I I think there's some policies already in place that kind of protect some of this and go through the process. But again, I don't disagree with a lot of the points made. It's just I think for me, what concerns me is a a counter suit to the fact of if I do beat the case or I do get found not guilty, not only are you you're just not going to just give me my job back and pay me, you're going to pay me more for me having to find out different ways to pay my bills throughout the the process of me fighting whatever legal issues or something that came up. That's the only concern for me.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Counsel Jordane?
Yeah, no, Counsel Rivera was right. Certainly, this is just, again, why I want to make sure we get this right because I think if we have the policy that's consistent with the state law and otherwise, then we avoid any question as to people having a right to sue. Because if you're not if you're on unpaid status and the law requires you to be on unpaid status, you're you're not entitled to these other forms of consequential damages. You're entitled to what the statute allows you to be entitled back to. And it's and it the statute enumerates what you're entitled to. So my concern could go the other direction, which is if you're paying people who are supposed to be on unpaid leave according to the statute, you're now subject to a ten taxpayer lawsuit for paying people that aren't supposed to be getting paid. Because now, if you pay somebody who's supposed to be unpaid and they lose, they've received a windfall. So it it works both ways. So we we have to make sure that we really carefully understand this and and have considered all these points. So I would encourage the law department to work with Personnel and with this committee to make sure we craft all of this in a coherent policy that's, you know, considering all these points. Because when we when there was doing a review, what I was concerned was we were only talking about from Personnel, and I know I don't believe she was able to be here tonight, our Personnel Director, because I think she's away.
She's on summer seminar.
I I only saw, yes. Okay, I only saw the CBA being reviewed. I didn't hear any mention of this state statute that seen was was at issue here too. So I wanted to bring that to the attention. Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of next steps, is the request to ask legal and Personnel to come back with a policy that addresses the statute?
Yes, and address, basically take the next step on Attorney Mantaleski's legal opinion. Stay, okay, in light of the state statute, if we have this scenario, we follow this. But these other CBA points don't conflict with the statute. So currently, our policy is we're going to follow this. And just harmonize that. And this way, you know, we're going to have a coherent policy, hopefully. And now and maybe they'll look at it and say, you know what? There's we're we have silence on a third consideration or a fourth consideration of things that could happen that neither the statute nor the CBA currently address. And so we need to fill those third or fourth scenarios up with a policy, whatever that's going to be. And we need discussion with the mayor and HR and everybody involved, and let's address those so that, you know, we're we're clear as to what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Mantaleski, are you clear with what's being requested?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And we'll count on you to coordinate with our HR director since she Okay, all right, and we'll count on you to coordinate with our HR Director since she couldn't be here tonight, okay?
Yes, yes, I will, um, reach out to her, um, after we are done here, um, so we can set up a meeting.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments from committee members? If not, I'd entertain a motion that we're referring this to legal to come back with a policy. And when do you think is a reasonable time, Attorney Mantuleski, on that? We will be, our, um, scheduled meetings so far are November 28th and December 12th.
I would, um, yeah, I would err on the side of December 12th, um, just because there's, um, if you're going to be looking at what provisions of the various CBAs conflict with various statutes, then it might take a, a little bit more research time. Um, so I would, I would think, um, if we could get that additional time for the December 12th meeting, that would be helpful to make a, um, a comprehensive review of that.
Okay, great. So I'd like to entertain a motion from committee that we're referring this to the Law Department to come back with a recommended policy on December 12th?
All moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor? Vacan, aye. Jordane?
Yes.
Rivera? Givner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so, it's sent over to legal and continued until December 12th. Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item seven?
All moved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Filed by Jordane and Vacan, ordered that ordinance two dash four two one be amended to include all public hearings so that the public has an opportunity to truly participate in their government and to advance transparency. We had taken this up four other times, and at the last meeting, Councilordane had provided a legal draft to legal, and maybe we had a little bit of confusion as to what was supposed to happen next, because we didn't get anything back, and so what I'm wondering, uh, to the representatives of the Law Department here, is if you're okay with the language that Councilordane provided, then what I'd like to do is move that to the council. But if it hasn't come back to us, so I'm just not sure why it didn't come back to us, if you just thought it was fine, or if there's something more being done with it.
Um, I'm unsure, um, but I would presume that that would mean that there is more being done to it. Um, but I can definitely check on that for you, so I would, um, I guess request, um, that we take this up at the November 28th meeting, um, or no, you're, you're ordinance, November 28th?
Yes, yes, so.
Yes, okay.
So let me just summarize, so what had happened is, we had asked for legal language, and it came back, and it didn't include everything that committee had recalled requesting. And so it was agreed that Councilordane would put forth the legal form to legal with the matters addressed as we had discussed, so it seemed like it was finishing the process, so we're just a little uncertain as to what more would be happening, because that's, the changes that he made were the changes the committee had wanted.
Okay, I did just look, um, at my meeting chat notes, at least the 22nd meeting, um. It looks like, um, Councilordane was going to be sending a language to Kathy, um, just Attorney Decan to add in. Um, so, without her being here, I don't want to speak for her as to what she has or has not done, um. So, I can, I can, um, uh, I can communicate with her as soon as we're, we're done here, um, asking just for a follow-up, and, um, maybe she can do some sort of communication, um, to the ordinance committee, but I would request that, just considering that, um, Attorney Decan and Councilordane were handling this, that I think that maybe I would feel more comfortable waiting, um, for her to be available to, to speak to that question.
Okay. All right, Councilordane?
Yeah, that, that's fine, no problem, um, Kat- Kathy was working on it, and, um, I think it was around September 10th that I had circulated that, so hopefully if Kathy or anybody else from the Law Department needs another copy of what we had come up with, um, please by all means let us know, but I, I think Jeff also circulated it around too, so. Yeah, that's fine, this, this can wait another four weeks, and, um, we'll take it up then. With whatever, you know, whatever they, whatever the, you know, commentary or, you know, it's good to go, or, you know, change this or change that, and then we'll, uh, we'll move it forward.
Uh, through the chair, um, Councilordane, I would just simply ask, yes, if you wouldn't mind just forwarding that, um, to my attention, just because I'm present here, um, so I can, um, have that, whatever you sent to Kathy on that date, then we can, I can have that for my reference when I am, um, letting her know.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to refer this to legal for final form, and, uh, we will table it to November 28th. Anybody? So moved?
All moved.
Second? All in favor? Vacan, yes. Jordane?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Thank you, so by your vote, this is put on the November 28th for final legal form, thank you. Okay, we did eight.
Motion to take up item eight?
We, we're, we did eight, and we did nine.
We're up to 10 now.
Yes, we are. So actually, well, all right, let's just take them one at a time, because all right. Actually, we could take them all up, right? Can we just take up 10 through 12, 10, 10 through 13 as a package?
Sure. All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ten. Ordered that two handicap parking spots be installed at the new park at Kennedy Field. Eleven, that a handicap sign be placed in front of 584th South Summer Street for Wilfredo Lorenzi. Item twelve, that handicap sign be placed in front of 541 and a half, no, 54 and a half Davis Street for Angel Louise Vasquez, Vasquez, the Tal. Item thirteen, in order to remove a handicap sign from the front of 60 North East Street, the person has moved. Okay, so we have measurements provided to us for item 10, 11, and 12. And we have a recommendation not completed. Um, Jeffrey, am I assuming that this attachment to item 11 is an approval from the Disabilities Commission?
Yeah, what you have there are, is from when the items were first referred to the committee. Um, Disabilities Commission did communicate with me and approved the applications. Um, they, they did say that they did not need to be involved in approving the two spaces at Kennedy Field, that the city council could just do that.
Okay, because they're just public.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you, just for confirming that for me. So, um, we have recommendation on items 11 and 12 from Disabilities Commission, item 10 does not require them, it's just to offer that accessibility at the park. And item 13, we have the measurements, it's simply to remove the handicap sign because the resident moved. So on item 10, can I have a motion to approve?
All moved.
Item 10?
Second.
All in favor? Vacan, aye. Jordane?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
McGi- uh, Givner?
Yes.
Thank you, four zero, that passes. Item 11, the handicap sign for 584th Summer Street is recommended by Disabilities Commission? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
A motion to approve?
Second.
This is for item 11, or 10?
11, we just did 10 for the park.
Okay.
Or the field, and now we're doing 11. All in favor? Vacan, yes. Jordane?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
You've approved that, four zero. Item 12, for 54 and a half Davis Street, also recommended by the Disabilities Commission? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Okay, can I ask a question on that one?
Sure.
Um, all right, um, I guess I was just, I was just trying to figure out where 54 and a half is, so, um, but I I don't know, if that, if that's the back of one of the two families on that side, I was just trying to understand that, but I, I did look it up, I.
It was filed by Council Bartley, and apparently, it's a situation with a tenant, and there's a tenant that parks in the driveway.
Okay.
So
Yeah.
I believe that was the context in which the application was sent.
Okay, yeah, and I know, I know there is an, uh, elderly gentleman that does live there, so I'm sure he needs it, so I, I'm certainly not going to hold it up, but I, I, I just, I knowing that street as well as I do, um, I, I wasn't aware of a 54 and a half, I guess that was the, the thing that I was finding interesting, but nevertheless, um, there's a person in need, let us move forward, so, uh, you know, I'm happy to vote for it.
Okay, all right, so, I think it was Vacan, yes, Rivera, yes, Jordane, you're a yes, and Givner?
Yes.
Okay, so that's four zero for item 12, 54 and a half Davis Street. So on item 13, we're removing a handicap sign because the person moved, so, could I have a motion to approve?
All moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Vacan, yes. Rivera?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Four zero, you have approved that, now let me just take a run-through, because we went all out of order on this agenda, and I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I think we're good to go, so now all we need is a motion to adjourn, and I just want it noted, it's 8:20.
Second.
Okay, so I'll take that, that I made the motion to adjourn, good enough. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you very much, good meeting.
Yeah, have a good, have a good night, bye-bye.
Good night.